Welcome everyone to the special meeting on Monday, April twenty eighth, five P M. Meeting called to order. Madam Clerk, may I have roll call, please?
Yes, Mayor Yon.
Present.
Vice Maricano.
Present.
Councilor Gonzalez.
Present.
Councilor Perez.
Present.
We have Coram.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Mister, Mister Garza, can you come and introduce yourself? He's our translator, interpreter.
Union Mayor and City Council and distinguished staff members. If you need translation, I'm here. Si necesita un traducción, aquí estoy. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Okay, leading us in invocation is our Vice, Vice Mayor Rick Connel.
Our head, Almighty God, we come before you with the humble hearts, seeking your grace and guidance. May your Holy Spirit be present among us, illuminating our minds and opening our hearts to your truth. We ask you for your blessing upon that we do, upon all that we do today. And we pray that we may be instruments of your love and peace. In the name of Jesus Christ, our Lord, our Savior, we pray, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Vice. And leading us now in the pledge allegiance is Mister Jim White. Can everybody please stand?
Ready, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated.
Thank you, Mister White. Before we approve the agenda as a forum, I want to amend our agenda. A motion to amend the agenda from moving to item two, the consent agenda to the administrative agenda, resolution number twenty twenty-five thirty, dash thirty-nine to the minister, with the following modifications. The total project should, should be, should be updated to a hundred forty-three thousand, seven hundred and forty-one dollars. The amount of the L C T O P funds requested should be thirty-six thousand, one hundred and thirty-five dollars. And the amount designated to benefit the priority population should be thirty-six thousand, one hundred and thirty-five dollars. Do I motion, do I motion to approve the agenda as a form with amendment?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Vice Maricano, second by Councilmember Perez. Madam Clerk, may I have roll call, please?
Mayor Yon.
Aye.
Vice Maricano.
Aye.
Councilor Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilor Perez.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Now, moving on to presentation, introductions and awards. We're gonna be having the swearing in of Martin Gutierrez. So, before you do the swearing in, council, do you have any comments, questions, anything regarding the swearing in before? Therefore? Mister Ms. Perez? Ms. Gonzalez?
No, I have none right now.
Vice Mayor?
No questions.
Martin, I just wanted to add congratulations on your appointment to the council. This, this role demands a lot of work. Hopefully, you're able to listen, learn and, and do good governance, what we got going on. I also want to thank your family, because they're, they're gonna be involved, because it's gonna take a lot of time away from your family and your, and your kids. And the best thing is doing it for the best interest of the community. And I, I think you had that intention. So, once again, welcome. Thank you, thank you for applying. And go ahead, Ms. De La Cruz.
Alrighty, please raise your right hand. Please repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Martin Gutierrez.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
Or affirm.
Or affirm.
That I will support.
That I will support.
And defend the Constitution.
And defend the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear truth, faith.
That I will bear truth, faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will.
And that I will.
And faithfully discharge.
And faithfully discharge.
The duties upon which I'm about to enter.
The duties of which I am about to enter.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Martin, would you like to say anything?
I just want to thank, thank the council for giving me this opportunity. For everybody that has started to get me up to speed and I'm ready for this duty that I've been blessed to have. Thank you.
Okay, catching up to speed is gonna take you awhile.
I know, that's what I said.
Go ahead and get up here and get to this thankless job, you know what I mean? I'm gonna put you right next to the chief, so in case, you know what I mean? You're, you're protected. So, alright, moving on, we have no public hearings. Moving on to administrative agenda. Do we want to start with item two, or do? Megan? No? Okay. Yeah, just get out of the way. Item number two, approval of resolution number twenty-eight, twenty-five, dash thirty-nine, resolution of the City Council, the City of McFarland, approving the execution of the certification and assurances and authorized agent forms for the low-carbon transit operations program, L C T O P, for the two-electric, zero-emission transit vans purchase project totally, total of, obviously, one hundred and forty-four thousand, three hundred and ninety with the amendments. So, go ahead, Ms. Melissa.
Honorable Mayor, members of council and members of the public. My name is Melissa Rosa, I am the city grant manager. And I bring this item to you today. This project is from L C Top, the Low Carbon Transit Operations Program. We are looking to provide safe and reliable transportation here in McFarland. We're always looking to help out our disadvantaged communities, those experiencing financial hardship, and also finding ways to reduce greenhouse gas emissions. So, the program is based in reducing these greenhouse gas emissions, as well as being able to reach these, these disadvantaged communities. So, overall, our planning for the project was designed to ensure that we are able to receive and purchase the zero-emissions vans project for our dial-a-ride service. It does not place any substantial burden on any of the low-income or vulnerable populations. Through community engagement, equity analysis and mitigation strategies, the project is designed to promote equality, equity and improve access to sustainable transportation for all residents. So, we are bringing this and we have a program that is year-over-year. This is our third year rolled over and we've brought previous resolutions. And so, this is just a continuation. We did have a change from the last two years. We originally were going to do and purchase a electric bus, but we have since pivoted and we looked and compared the differences between electric buses to electric vans. With the amount that we have, we would be able to purchase two vans. So, that would provide twice the coverage for the city. We are looking at expanding these transit services all throughout. And with this change, we would be doubling ridership over the course of the lifetime of the vehicles. So, year-over-year, we currently do seventy-five hundred ridership. But we are looking at getting fifteen thousand over this change. So, we're looking at more service using less money. This is because we, when we did an analysis of the cost for bus, they are over a million dollars. For electric buses that would be zero emission. So, we also made the change on the total price due to estimations. So, when we submitted, they, L C Top provided us with estimations that we use for this resolution that we do year-over-year. We were called today to provide actual numbers. So, that difference is six hundred and forty-nine dollars. So, it went from the total cost that they will be giving us year, throughout, throughout the whole project, of one hundred forty-four thousand, three hundred and ninety dollars to a hundred and forty-three thousand, seven hundred and forty-one dollars. That would change this year's allocation is what we're asking you to approve today as staff. To be, instead of thirty-six thousand, four hundred and fifty-six dollars, to thirty-six thousand, one hundred and thirty-five dollars. So, staff recommends the approval of resolution number twenty-two-five, thirty-nine, a resolution of the City Council of the City of McFarland, approving the execution of the certifications and assurances and authorized agent forms for the low-carbon transit operations program for the two-electric, zero-emissions transit van purchases projects totaling in a hundred and forty-three thousand, seven hundred and forty-one dollars.
Thank you, I'm gonna open it up to the public. Does anybody have any public, any questions, concerns regarding this, this item? Shall I?
For any of those wondering, our electric bus would have held fifteen people, but each van would hold twelve people. So, we would have a total of twenty-four.
It's a major, it's not even an offset on the cost, because the bus would be a million dollars and one forty-four. Let me, let me open up to the council. If you have any questions, concerns, we'll start with Ms. Gonzalez.
No, I don't have any at the moment, thank you.
Mr. Gutierrez? Oh, there's none on the mic. Hit that button, there you go. It's alright.
I have no questions.
Thank you. Ms. Perez?
My only question is, do we have other drivers? I know we have one driver right now that I'm aware of, but do we have other drivers? Would we be feeling that?
Publicist works, director, yeah.
Certified, should say. Right, yearly's?
That's correct, Mayor, and Councilor Perez. We have, currently, we want to get multiple staff in there to certify for their G P V V and their class B license to, in case somebody takes a vacation or something, we continue that ride service.
Good deal. I'm not gonna try to repeat that, G P V V, but I understand what you're saying. Vice Mayor?
No questions.
Okay, I got two, two, not two issues, but I don't really like us being called like a disadvantaged community, maybe an underserved community.
Oh, yes. In our application, we are required to, to serve a disadvantaged community, but for the purposes of today, we are an underserved community.
Thank you so much. And then, the financial impact?
There's none to the general fund. The cost of this purchase would be fully covered by the grant.
Thank you, that's just, that's the most important thing right there, zero costs. Thank you, Melissa, good, good job, Megan as well. Thank you for the modification and the adjustments to be on point with that. So, thank you for the resolution. Do, have any motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion by Vice Maricano, second by Councilmember Gonzalez. Madam Clerk, may I have roll call, please? Aye.
Vice Maricano.
Aye.
Councilor Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilor Perez.
Aye.
Councilor Gutierrez.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Moving on to item number three, approval of resolution twenty-two-five, dash forty, resolution of the City Council of the City of McFarland approving memorandum of understanding with current economic development foundation for a wage reimbursement emerging leaders program. Ms. McEwen.
Good evening. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council and residents. As some of you may know, the City of McFarland has officially launched the emerging, emerging leaders program. It's an unpaid-paid internship initiative that's designed to offer high school and college students valuable public service experience. In partnership with Kern E D C and with the support of Community Development Director, Ms. Megan Snyder, the city has secured the opportunity to receive wage reimbursement for up to two interns. Through this program, the city will reimburse, will be reimbursed eight dollars and twenty-five cents per hour for up to forty hours per week over an eight-week period, with a maximum reimbursement of two thousand, six hundred and forty dollars per intern. The city will remain the employer of the record, managing onboarding and insurance as well as, I'm sorry, and receive reimbursement upon invoicing at the conclusion of the internships. This will help offset some of the costs for just two of our interns. As of right now, we are going to make a selection for one of our collegiate and postgraduate, most likely our postgraduate. But again, we're still going through the recruiting process for the fall internship program, summer and fall internship program. So, I'm open to any questions.
Thank you, Ms. McEwen, I'm gonna open it up to the public. Anybody have questions, concerns regarding this item? Seeing none, I'm gonna bring it back to the council. We'll start with Ms. Gonzalez.
You say that the, we'll get refunded, reimbursed eight dollars and twenty-five cents per hour? And then, we just pay the, the?
The difference.
The difference?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Mr. Gutierrez?
No question.
Ms. Perez?
None, thank you, Mayor.
Vice Mayor?
No, no questions.
Oh, thank you. Serena, good job on getting some of this reimbursement. I know we're developing, not discouraging our youth to potentially be future leaders of this city. And this is a great internship that we, we got going on and reimbursing that those funds are, are good to help the, with the funding, with the general fund. But thank you for bringing that up and bringing it to the, to the council. Do I motion to approve the resolution?
Motion. Second.
Mayor Yon.
Aye.
Vice Maricano.
Aye.
Councilor Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilor Perez.
Aye.
Councilor Gutierrez.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Moving on to item number four, approval of resolution number twenty-two-five, dash forty-one, a resolution of the City Council of the City of McFarland approving that pay rate adjustments for specified public work positions and updating the salary range schedule. Ms. McEwen, this is, this is yours.
Hello, again, yes. So, the City of McFarland continues its efforts to maintain competitive compensation to support employee retention, recruitment and the delivery of high-quality services. A recent market analysis identified that several of our positions in public works are approximately two-point-five percent or more below, more below the market average. To address these discrepancies, staff is proposing targeted pay rate adjustments for these specific classifications. An updated salary range schedule reflecting these adjustments is submitted for council's review and adoption. The goal of these changes is to close existing wage gaps, strengthen retention and ensure the city maintains a well-qualified workforce for the operation and maintenance of vital infrastructure and services. The financial impact for the remainder of the fiscal year is estimated at approximately fifteen thousand across multiple of city funds. And due to current vacancies in the affected classifications, no budget adjustment is required at this time and staff will continue to monitor expenditures and return to council if future adjustments become necessary. And I'm open to any questions.
Thank you, Ms. McEwen. I'm gonna open up to the public, if you have any questions, concerns regarding the salary adjustment. Seeing none, I want to close the public comment. I'm gonna start with our council, bringing back Mister Gutierrez.
No questions.
Ms. Gonzalez?
And this will be effective immediately?
Yes, upon approval, yes, thank you.
Ms. Perez?
None, thank you.
Vice Mayor?
No questions, just a comment, great job on looking into that, because it's important that we pay our employees good wages, thank you.
Yeah. Ms. McEwen, I know we've, we've, we've been going through this for a couple of weeks. We're losing, potentially losing employees to other, other cities due to the fact that we're one of the smaller agencies. But I just wanna, I wanna comment on this, it's not that we're not paying the employees what they merit, because there's an offset with the health coverage, that we have the best premium health coverage there is in the county or even for schools, we pay completely full coverage, so I think that offsets the, the wages. Problem is that we're, people, workers don't see the different, they see the pay, but they don't see the benefit until they're affected with it, as far as the package. And when I was approached regarding this, I'm like, well, we just got, we just got an award for fixing some of our streets, how are we gonna lose our, our workers? I mean, I'm not gonna knock on chapter, because I mean, obviously, they got a lot of revenue in commercial, but, you know, we try, everybody competes for good employees. And we've had that problem here for decades, where we didn't have good department heads or, I don't even want to go into employees, but I think it's important that we try to adjust, but we don't try to basically drown ourselves in trying to compete with bigger agencies. But I think this is duly noted for, for yearly's and his department to have people that are certified in those positions and do the job and start from scratch. But, good job in bringing this up and city manager as well, making, making sure we're not waiting until we lose more employees. So, way to move on that. And with that, do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
First by Vice Maricano, second by Councilmember Perez. Madam Clerk, may I have roll call, please?
Yes, Mayor Yon.
Aye.
Vice Maricano.
Aye.
Councilor Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilor Perez.
Aye.
Councilor Gutierrez.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Moving on to public comment, members of the public wishing to address the council about any item not on the agenda may do so at this time. Speakers are limited to two minutes for each person. Fifteen minutes total will be allowed for any one subject. Please say your name and address for the record before making presentation. Madam Clerk, do we have anybody for public comment?
There are none.
Is there anybody there that didn't have time to sign up, that wanted to speak? Go ahead, Ms. Clar, Clarabel.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor and City Council. I just want to walk on your new, own city council to the equation of the city of McFarland and I work for Assemblywoman Dr. Jasmine Baines. So, anything that's gonna enhance our residents and the information that's provided to all, hopefully, you come with the sentiment that the mayor say that you are here to be part of the positive equation to make McFarland better. McFarland USA with the legacy with Mister Blanco right here. So, we just here to bridge the gap. So, anything that our office could help, we're here to work with all you guys. So, welcome to the family and hopefully, we see you in all the events and participating in a positive way to enhance what we already have going on in the city of McFarland. Congratulations.
Thank you, Clarabel. Anybody else?
Good afternoon, Mayor and honorable council. Janet Tapia, current county district rep for state Senator Melissa Hurtado, and I just want to echo my colleague Clarabel's words, welcome to the council. And we just want to make sure that you know that Senator considers herself a partner for the city. And if there is ever anything that she or our team can do, we are here to help and be of service. And I will happily give you my business card afterwards. But, thank you and welcome, and we can't wait to see all the things that you do here for the city.
Thank you.
Hi, sir, we met earlier. I'm Steven with Congressman Valadeo's office and just like to echo some of the comments from my colleagues. Really happy to have you here on the council, look forward to working with you. Congressman Valadeo loves McFarland, is one of his, one of his favorites. So, we look forward to continuing to work with you, continue to work with the mayor, all the council members and all the city staff, city manager. And congratulations, appreciate it.
Thank you, Steven. Is there anyone else for public comment? Moving on, council comments, I'll start with Mister, Mister Gutierrez.
Well, I just want to thank everybody again for giving me this opportunity. I hope this meeting is short all the time, just kidding. But, um.
We're not done.
I'm just kidding, it's the regular meeting. But, thanks for the opportunity and like, hopefully, in about a year, I'll get caught up with everything that's going on.
No worries, it's all good. It took some people eight years, nine years, and they still didn't learn. But anyways, I don't want to mention names. Go ahead, Ms. Gonzalez.
Uh, no, just everyone, thank you for coming and thank you for those kind words. Just, thank you and have a nice evening, thank you.
Ms. Perez?
Yes, thank you everybody for being here present and welcome, Mister Gutierrez, to our crew. We look forward to working with you and if you have any questions, don't hesitate to ask. Everybody's always at your disposal, so, welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Perez. Vice Mayor?
Thank you for the representatives for being here tonight, we appreciate your guys' presence. Congratulations, Martin, on your appointment. I know it's exciting, there's a lot of great things happening, of course, but there is a lot happening. And of course, these meetings are, one of those meetings where it's a short meeting. But, I want to thank the chief and the entire McFarland P D for the great job at the Cinco de Mayo Festival over the weekend. It was amazing, the city staff, everybody working out there overtime, you know, on a Sunday. Nobody likes to work on a Sunday, because of course, you know, it's, it's kinda resting, but thank you, guys. I saw, not even gonna name the staff members, because I'll probably not name everybody. But thank you for everyone that was out there. I want to remind everyone, May first is the, the National Day of Prayer. City of McFarland will be having ours with the chamber at six o'clock in the morning. Welcome everybody to attend, thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Martin, once again, congratulations. We're all here to support each other, help each other out. I want to say to call me, because my phone is non-stop, but go ahead and, but all council and vice mayor, they're available. Diego, Brian, everybody, you call them on Sunday, sometimes they might answer the first time, but they'll answer you second. And so, we try to work, because the city never stops working. But congratulations again on your appointment, and then, I think you'll do a great service for the community. To the representatives, thank you for coming out and showing support. But I have a lot of earmarks for you guys, so don't leave until you could take them back to the senator and congressman regarding our police department and other things, but don't worry, I wasn't, I wasn't gonna let that one go. But, I want to thank chief, all the administration, Megan, Diego, for helping with the festival committee. I know it came down to the, the city and some donations, helping out with, with the security cost. And at the end of the day, it's in our best interest to help with some of the donations that you guys received earlier this year. So, therefore, the main concern for us is the security out there. And I just want to address, I want, I want to thank the festival committee for organizing and this event that was well-attended through the last twenty years. It was a great opportunity for the community to come together. The energy, entertainment and the atmosphere, I heard were great. This event was, made positive impacts for our community. I just want to address one thing, and I don't want to be a negative individual, but I feel that it's important to, to bring this to the attention by, because I, I didn't, I didn't attend, but I was here Sunday evening, I got some parents calling me. And some of my students today were very upset regarding the pricing and the food. Some parents were concerned, were, because they, they gave their kids only so much amount of money, so they had to pick between the rides or food. And my, my question is, who's responsible for approving the regulations on the food with the pricing? And my, my question is, who's responsible for approving the regulations on the food with the price gouging? A slice of pizzas were ten dollars, bagel and stuff like that were sixteen, fifteen dollars, a water bottle was five dollars. And I was just like, fabrikated, I couldn't believe that. Because I know we had our event three, four weeks ago and our staff would not allow any of this price gouging. So it's just a miss, just a, a lot of kids were upset today because they didn't feel that they got to enjoy the, the experience. But I just, sometimes people don't like my approach because I call it as it is, call balls and strikes. And if nobody speaks for our kids, who else is? And so next year, they're gonna have the same problem. And the, the problem that, that you got, well, not everybody sees that. They think that the city council and the mayor are in charge of this event. So right away they go to me and say, why are you charging so much? I'm like, what are you talking about? So anyways, we just gotta, we just gotta basically oversee and make sure that this doesn't happen again. It's such, it's such a good event, I, I enjoy when I've gone out there and see the kids dance and people dance, but they just make sure that there's oversight on everything, you know? But other than that, I hope that this event continues. We will help out as much as we can as far as the city, because it's a great, it's a great event. We got all the events for the community to bring everybody together. So, and with that, I don't have anything more to report. And we're gonna go into close, that ends our regular, well, ends our special meeting for today. We're gonna go into closed session. You wanna read it, Nathan?
During closed session, council discussed conference with legal counsel, potential litigation pursuant to government code section five-four-nine-five-six-point-nine-B. There's two cases.
Thank you. Thank you everybody for attending. If you wanna, before we dance, you wanna take a picture of Martin up here and stuff like that, family members, you're more than welcome to do so before going to closed session with, with the reps and ourselves, so go ahead, Martin, I hope you comb your hair.